Hello.
All right, it's five thirty, so I will call our meeting to order. Michelle, would you do the roll call, please?
Steve Behrens.
Here.
Did any work my sir?
Here.
Gina O'Raugh.
Here.
Nicole Jacobs.
Here.
Carol Hahnke.
Here.
All present. Could you join me in the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, our next agenda item is approval of the agenda. I would entertain a motion as such.
I'll make a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
I'll second.
Even Nicole. Any discussion, questions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say aye. Carried. Michelle, any city announcements? Oh, sorry. What they form? Anybody here to speak this evening? Okay. City announcements.
Just a quick reminder, this next coming bill will have the new rates.
The one that comes out after the end of this month.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. Item number five, consent agenda, I would entertain a motion for approval.
I have a question in regards to consent item. On the, I'm talking generally.
Okay.
Because I don't even know if I can be doing this or not, can I?
Really supposed to do a motion first and then we can.
Okay. So I'll move to approve the claims.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Gene, okay, discussion on consent agenda.
What constitutes a preauthorized claim?
We had a, we had a resolution at the beginning of the year that you all agreed on, and we had a list of all them that were preauthorized.
Okay.
It's like monthly payments?
Okay.
So that we're not late getting them in?
Yep, okay, good, and then what about contractual payments, like, you know, we make TEBK? Yeah, where are those at?
Those will, those will be presented to you.
Okay.
As they come in.
So they're, they're not a preauthorized claim, they would just go and reclaim. Okay, so then with that, being on that vein, with what we get, there's, is there an indication that, for example, with the switchgear, that's, those funds come out of a particular fund, but like VEX and EGR and so on? I don't ever see those, right?
No, you will.
Because they'll be out of a certain fund also?
Yeah, anything that's for the switchgear comes out of the switchgear fund.
Okay.
Anything that's for the lagoon will come out of sewer. And then, and then you'll see, you'll see the engineer or the contractor or even, even parts that are purchased under each, each of those funds.
So is there any way to tag, like, you know, for example, if we have two, three different projects going with Beck? Is there any way to tag that claim to a particular project?
If it's going for any kind of capital project, it will be in that capital project fund.
Okay, so then.
You'll say what it is, won't you? Yep.
So then where do we see those?
That would be like in your switchgear.
Okay. Okay.
The only thing we have going with Beck now would be.
Yeah, I'm just was.
As time goes on, if we have multiple.
Right.
I can sure do something different.
That's what I was wondering, if those could be tagged, so we know what fund they're coming out of. Okay.
Well, we talked about that too, like whenever we meet for the workshop, that's when we're gonna be kind of getting some more clarity of what is going to be out per, per project.
Right.
Right, and then what the balance is like, and that's, I know we talked to already.
Because.
It's that way, we know where we're at too.
Right. I remember when I was on the council previously, they, which is very helpful, is when an amount came out of account, then it would show that amount, and then what's left in that amount.
The balance.
Right, and then it would indicate what, what's the number at the beginning, what's that called? The number? No.
The coding?
Yeah, the coding at the front was always been listed with that particular, say the fire department, for example, bought.
Well, that's what.
Five hundred units.
It does break it down.
But their previous, when I was on the council before, it would actually be the account, like, you know, the budget for the fire department, they have a number of different accounts underneath that budget.
And you got that at your council meeting, or you got that with your financials?
Every council, I was gonna say.
Because I was doing, I was doing the change report differently than this, and then I was told to do it this way because this is how everyone was used to, used to seeing it.
Well, may, I'm talking four years ago, so maybe all that changed over time, but, you know, for me, and it would, it's easier to do that, because then I'm able to present that particular budget to like the ambulance or the fire department or the airport and say, this is where you're at in this particular fund or column, or whatever you want to call it, so. I don't know, something to consider.
I do not remember that.
Do you, do you have that sheet, do you have any of those sheets still from before? Probably not, you're, you're one that throws everything away.
That's.
I've got them. From forty, yeah.
But I don't know.
Maybe if, when you want that, she can print out a report for a given time period.
Well, that might be the easier way to go, as long as it shows, like, for example, maintenance, you know, these items are taken out of that, goes towards their budget, in other words, so that they can manage their money better, so that they know what's coming out of what.
Well, I think the fire department and them take care of that, so I'm not saying you couldn't see it.
Well, I know, but I'm just using you as an example, because that's what I did before, so.
To get like McQueen and what's that? Previous, that used to say, oh, oh, one dash one fifty.
Had a whole code.
Whatever the line item was.
And then you could go into your paperwork and you'd find out what that was.
So then you guys want to have any questions?
Anyway, something to think about.
How are you guys want me to do the claim report? Because I said I started doing it differently and then was told that it was cared for.
Let's talk about it at the workshop. And I'll try to get some examples of what we did.
Yeah, bring some of your old ones.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yep.
Thank you for your patience.
Okay, any other questions or discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, say aye. Carry the consent agenda. All right. Agenda number six, insurance update. I haven't been here since you changed the format, where do you want me to stand? You can.
Right, perfect.
Okay, good. In front of you, you should have a little packet there about the health insurance. So it's time for the renewal for the group health policy. Renews January first, so any changes we want to make need to be done by the fifteenth of December. So on your first page shows, on the left is where we were at today, and on the right is what is changing to. So the, the plan is not changing at all in any way, except for the premium, and the premium's going up by that eighteen point eight percent. So pretty good size increase. As we kind of go through, you'll kind of see why there's a little bit of an increase there. So page two, the main increase comes from, they, they show several examples of where they come up with the numbers, but the main increases are risk level has increased, that's at twelve point two four percent out of that eighteen point eight percent. So our group, so we're in a group, and then our group is in with other groups. The group as a whole, not our group, but the other groups as a whole, is only going up by two percent. So we're in with healthy groups. Some probably had decreases in their premiums this year, so that's the good news. I mean, our rate increase is basically because we had some claims, so, and they're actually helping us to hold down our premiums, so. If you go onto the third page, kind of talks about our claims, doesn't give any specific examples, but the top there, this is the current year that we're looking at, almost six hundred thousand dollars of covered claims there. The year before, quite a bit less, but still pretty high, at two hundred thousand. And then down below in the middle there tells about any claims that were over ten thousand dollars or more, and there were, there were several of them. So we are using it as the good news, so. It's there for the coverage, so. Any questions on that?
That's the group as a whole, right?
That's our group as a whole, yep, yep, that's the city of Pointe as a whole, yep, yep. So just kind of gives you a snapshot picture of what happened last year, what happened the year before, so.
What was our percentage increase last year, do you remember?
I don't remember.
Neither.
Last year it went up a little, and I'm thinking it was like six percent or something, eight percent, you're probably right. And then I think a couple of years ago, it actually went down by quite a bit.
Yes.
Like twenty to twenty-five percent, and I don't have those numbers, but, yeah.
I just wonder. We know.
Yep, yep, so, that, yeah. So on the fourth page there, lots of numbers there, so I highlighted, what I highlighted is where we're at right now, and kind of gives a description of the plan and everything. Off on the right-hand side, see that eighteen point eight percent, so that's our increase from where we were at the renewal here today. So it shows on that right-hand side, if you choose a different plan, then either the premium goes up and it gives you a percentage there compared to where you are today, or it goes down. And I, I've got pages of options, if you want to make any changes to the plan. So that's the only reason all the rest of the pages are there, those are all the different options, so. Currently, we're at a two thousand dollar deductible per person, four thousand per family. So I don't know, you tell me what information, it's a pretty good size increase percentage-wise, so are you interested in taking a look at other options?
Well, yes, the coverage through the city, everybody.
Everybody, I think everybody takes it, don't they? I will say that when I went to that budget workshop last week, most municipal insurances were seeing a thirty percent increase.
I thought that's what you told me, so I was surprised to see eighteen, and I'm happy with eighteen after hearing.
Yeah, yeah. So because of the increase, Alana and I took a look at other options, can we go with a different company for a little cheaper premiums? Can we go with Obamacare for a little cheaper premiums? So we quoted all those. Obamacare was about fifteen hundred dollars more per month than where we're at now, which kind of makes sense, we're grandfathered plan, so keep in mind with, remember when everything kind of switched over, you could stay with what you got, or you could go to Obamacare. The ones that went to Obamacare were the unhealthy groups or the, the high-priced groups. The healthy groups with low premiums stayed where they were at because it was cheaper. So we are in with a good group of healthy groups a, as a whole. And so, so, yeah, exactly. So we, we quoted it that way, we also, you can, you can prove insurability and that type of thing. Right now, we're not in that situation. So we kind of went from a real healthy group before, we're maybe not the healthiest group right now. That doesn't mean next year it won't be.
And there's a possibility of it going down then?
Absolutely, yes. We, our rate increase was based because of our health situation was the main reason it went up. But it didn't go up really, if you look at the claims versus what your premiums are, it didn't go up by much, so that tells me they think it's more of, more of a one-time thing, it's not like it's gonna be a continuing thing for the next twenty years.
No more surgeries.
Positive, well, you know what, that's what insurance is for.
Yep.
Yeah.
Well.
So the, the numbers to the right here, those are based on our plan now and.
Yeah.
Percentage.
Yeah.
Changes from the plan that.
From today's plan to what is gonna be when it renews in January. Yep, yep. That's that far right column.
Right.
Yep. So the second half of our fiscal year will be affected by this, do you remember what was budget for increase in the budget?
Fifteen, that was for sure.
So, so something similar to this.
Fifteen percent, is that what you said? I have to double check. No. I know, I know we do. No.
So, yeah, it's close.
Well, we have the employee fund too, right, that we could
Right.
grab some money from if we needed to.
I don't know if you do it for, that's for IFRS and stuff, isn't it? The levy that we levy, is that what?
Yeah, the levy.
That goes for IFRS and something else. I know it helps with that, I don't remember, there was two things I thought. And we did raise the percentage, the boys pay the, instead of fifteen, they're doing twenty. That's only. Kelly. And you have another one on family? Just recently, yeah, that's what I thought you said.
But you guys think that it's good coverage, it's, everything is.
Always liked it.
I've always thought it was a good, sorry, a good company.
Yeah.
You can't beat them, I don't think.
Yeah.
You're correct.
They work with you and.
Yep, yep.
And they give you like here, you can look, you can say, okay, we do this or this, but you know where you're at.
Yes. Yep.
And we could get back to you if we want to look at it a little bit more and.
Okay, yeah, yeah, questions, let me know.
Yep.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you, Ken.
Yeah, thanks, yeah. So six B is a move, item to approve the new rates, and if the council is ready to approve these rates, or we want to move that to the next meeting, that would be in time for for any action.
I'll make a motion for the new rates.
I'll second.
All right, discussion on the motion to approve the new rates.
Is anything else really gonna change that is gonna make a, a big difference, that we need to look into something else or different options?
Well, he, he did take the time to look at a couple.
But it just didn't come out to be anything that was worth it?
Your coverage by the end is good.
Could we get a budget number quick, Michelle, on what you put in the account?
It'll be real quick, because it comes out of individual.
Oh.
So same was going up one hundred fifty-five, fifty-three. We cover that.
So what are we being?
Take that same off of family, and they can push it.
All these pages. You're looking for dollars.
Everything is the same, it's just the increase, right? I don't see how much difference, so that, I mean, it's. So I don't think it's bad.
So it's not made up, so that's.
I said, it's sealed at the courthouse. It kind of out.
Any thoughts from the council on how much time we want to spend here on this, or do we want to?
Go on.
To, to, or do we want to table, I don't like to table things, but do we want to wait until the next meeting so that Michelle can pull this information together?
Right.
Well, if she's thinking fifteen percent, it's going up eighteen percent.
It's close.
Do you really want to table something that is?
It's like a circle, January, and we're gonna have a budget then.
Well, it's not for January, the budget's July.
Well, that's right, you have to wait for six months, so.
Yeah.
Darn old fiscal year.
So we can, they're vote on this motion as it stands with the information you have?
She's got it.
He's got it.
Okay.
Just tell us, Michelle.
Yeah, just tell us from there.
My feeling is that these claim, I mean, these claims that we had, we had some larger, it's a one, not a one-time thing, but it's.
It's not annual recurring.
That's right.
That's exceptional.
And regardless, insurance is increasing anyways, so even if we wanted to have these claims, it still would have increased, maybe not to this extent, but again, that's what, that's what insurance is for.
Well, you're saying to her thirty percent or we'll be eighteen, with no sound plan, was what we had for claims. We have, we have more than half left, so. Like, we have twenty-four thousand left in the water insurance, twenty-one thousand left in sewer. Thirty-seven thousand left in electric, General's got forty-two thousand left.
So does that show you like increase year over year from insurance, benefits insurance?
I have, this, this, this report wouldn't.
Yeah.
But this is forty-one point six percent this whole year. So that's all your insurance, you're, you know, I thought they were talking about this one, the, or the, yeah.
The health?
The health insurance, this is the.
That, that's the.
It pulls out of those.
Oh.
That's, that's the benefit, that's this insurance in each.
She gives it up.
Thank you. All right, so any other discussion, do you want to vote on? Anybody want to call the motion? Any other action?
I'm not opposed to voting on the motion, but if you could bring that information to our workshop and show insurance costs and what we may be looking, having to do something, that'd be great, so.
And I'll talk about the budget workshop again. Department of Management Ted Nelson said he, if we have, he's, he said, I'm okay if I see a budget amendment every month.
No.
He said, there's no limit on the, on the budget amendments.
Yeah.
We should do budget amendments before we go.
Amen.
Okay.
Looks a lot nicer.
Proactive budget amendments, not, not reactive, so we need a plan.
Sure.
So, you know, we can look at this and we have to do a budget amendment.
So be it.
Right.
Well, at least we'll be out in front of it, right?
Right, I agree, and you will see that, you can let us know on anything.
I'm ready to vote on it.
Yeah.
All right, this is just a motion, right, not a resolution?
Right.
Okay, so we have a motion in the second to, to approve the new health insurance rates for the fiscal twenty, no, for calendar twenty twenty-five. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say aye. Carried with all ayes. Okay. Item number seven, hometown Christmas resolution approved street closures. There's a resolution packet? I would entertain a motion to approve that resolution.
I've moved to approve resli- resolution to close streets in the business district for Polina's annual hometown Christmas event. Be resolved by the council of the city of Pointe, Iowa to approve closing downtown streets noted below from five thirty PM to seven PM on Saturday, twelve, seven, twenty twenty-four. Railroad Street from North Main to Mickley Street, North Mickley Street from Railroad Street to East Broadway Street, East Broadway Street to Bradley Street.
I'll second that.
Any discussion, so no closures of Main other than the intersection of Broadway crossing Main, right? Okay, any other questions or discussion? So I'm ready to vote, roll call, please.
Steve Behrens?
Aye.
Did any work, myster?
Aye.
Gina O'Raugh?
Aye.
Nicole Jacobs?
Aye.
Carol Hahnke?
Aye.
All right, passes with all ayes. Okay, item number eight, fiscal year twenty-four, street finance report, shell.
Well, this is something that just needs to be presented to the council, it doesn't need approved, doesn't need a resolution, it's just presented and you have any questions on it? All of this is what we've spent out of the, out of the street, the, the road funds, there are two. But I did find out that some years back, they would never, they wouldn't let you transfer from general to roads, or the road use taxes kept that fund. That changed somewhere around twenty twenty, but a lot of clerks kept both the general and a road use tax fund. And so you just kind of, you'd get invoiced, you're like, well, which one are we gonna put it, are we gonna put it in general, are we gonna put it here? And the reason that they would, they, they kept it separate is if you went over in that road use, road use tax, you could then pull it out of general. Now you can, if you need to, you can pull from general and put it into road use tax. So we can have just one fund and not have to, to guess, you know, which, which side do I put it in?
So you have it now, is it got to do fund yet?
Too.
And that's always been that way since you've been working on it.
So we can just move it all into one?
Yeah, you could, that would be, and you'd probably like that better?
Yes.
Because I always wondered, why, why do we have two?
Yeah, right, for the same thing.
Yeah. That they used to never let you transfer from general to road use tax.
So that funnel increase, that's what you're saying, road, road use tax.
If, yeah, if we, if we're doing our budget and we feel like that road use tax, what we're gonna get, is it gonna be enough to cover our budget? And we can transfer a general into the road use tax.
So you do it at the time that you need the funds in road use tax.
Say that again.
So you transfer the money at the time.
Yeah.
That you need money in road use tax.
Right.
In that fund, out of the general fund into that fund.
If you need it.
If you need it, right, okay. So the, with the ground, grand totals here, the beginning, beginning balances, the same balances in road use tax checking fund, right?
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, page, the last page. That top number there, that three hundred seventy-six thousand one hundred sixty. That's.
Right, yeah, right.
Okay.
All right, any other questions of Michelle? All right, any other questions of Michelle on the street finance report? Here and then we will move on to agenda item number nine, generation being electric generation update, Kelly?
Brother wanted me to get a cost breakdown of what, uh. The generator cost can be in the, in the page that's in your package.
It looks like this. So it's D G R.
So this one assumes we can get a used generator for a million and then what the other costs would be, right?
Sure adds up fast, doesn't it?
It is.
So where would the generator be located at, Kelly?
I guess my house going to be take down the digger ship, the white building that's across from the park.
Okay, the wood building there?
All the garages that has.
So it'd be on city property no matter what, okay? I didn't see amount, and maybe it's in, in one of these numbers, but what about? I guess there wouldn't be really much demo if you put it there with a couple of scrapes with the back on, probably have it taken care of.
Right.
Okay, so are we required to prepare the ground then, make the base and so on for?
All we'd have to do is just get that building over there.
Okay. So what, a couple thousand, probably to get that thing care of, I suppose?
What's in the building now? I think you've said it already, but.
There's, um. Nate's extra cars in there, the boy scout trailer, a bunch of snow fence. Some, uh. Used wire that's, I guess, hanging there in case of tornado comes through down or something, we got some. Stuff we can use, I mean, there's nothing really.
We have places for that stuff to go.
We can find room.
So this would be an outdoor generator, just a bit set on slab, not in a building?
It'd be enclosed, but yeah.
Yeah.
It'd be like prim bars?
Yeah, it'd be just like prim bars.
And it's figured in here, I can see what it says, the installed metal enclosure, so metal enclosure.
Got it, yeah.
Yeah, so.
Earthwork, what? That's a big chunk, what is that then?
I mean, that would be your.
The civil structural, the last one, for a hundred and fifty thousand?
Pretty sure that would be like the, the foundation for it, it's the foundation of getting the ground ready. The foundation is gonna be pretty.
Because we got the generator foundation for seventy-five thousand, and exhaust stack foundation for thirty, and then earthwork hundred and fifty.
They're gonna have to do some digging to push the foundation in, so not so fast.
Big chunk.
Yeah.
I suppose that pad has to be specialized too, doesn't it, to access a generator?
Yeah.
Because the generator, the oil panel be on the other knee side, right, so they don't have to sit in a cradle or whatever. Yeah, so it would have to be specialized concrete and floor and foundation work, so. Because what, what are the, what's that thing got away?
I don't know.
Thirty, forty ton probably?
Probably.
So what, talking about funding just for a little bit here, what's the cost of getting a bond for, if we, if we wanted to move ahead with this? Because we need a bond, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, we'd have to get a bond. So is there a cost involved with that to, like?
They have to go back to those, that meeting you guys had with the Danny Davidson to relook at that.
So I think we talked about that when we were in that room back there.
Right. I guess my, my concern is, is it ten thousand or is it hundred thousand? For the secure bond? Probably more like the ten, right? Or is it a percentage of?
Probably more like the other one.
Yeah.
Probably. Yeah, I think at the point in time that the council would, would look at these, we might want to have somebody from D J R. Come in and explain these and ask those challenging questions, if you will. One is the contingencies in engineering, four hundred and thirty-two thousand, what part of that is contingency and what part is engineering and why?
Yeah, yeah, that number kind of surprised me.
It's an interesting one to combine into one line item.
Million sounded bad enough, and then you add all this.
Yeah.
I had like a little explanation on the tables that they put together, I think I got it figured out, but. And only a certain number of these are actually, were, that we'd be concerned with now, right, since we've narrowed it down to the used generator?
Probably.
There's nineteen tables in here, so.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, different, different.
scenarios.
Different payback years, different interest rates and, and different.
So it'd be good to hear from D G R. What all that means, so.
Yeah, so with this one, you know, we had heard, you know, verbally a million dollar number at one point in time, and then, uh, two, two million dollar option, two point one million dollars, which is this one, and two more expensive ones.
Right.
But I asked Kelly to get this breakdown for us so that we can start knowing what the components of that costing were before we have our, you know, finance meeting, uh, workshop coming up.
So is there any advantages to a new one over a used one, just? Because they're made to run forever, right?
Right. As long as you take care of them, they'll run forever.
And they're natural gas powered then, or how are?
Diesel.
Okay, diesel's running forever, so. So the, to start the engine, it's all, I see it's battery, right, or it's got batteries included? And I assume there's a continual charge on those, keep those batteries? At the end, because they need to start the generator. As long as it made it, it's done, right?
Exactly.
Because I see they have a line item for that in those tables, so, so.
Okay, so that's for your information for upcoming meetings. Um, item number ten, at the last meeting, we decided to renew a finance workshop, Michelle, do you want to talk about timing of that?
Yeah. Bad timing. I have got the Indian Farm due by the first, and I've got two urban renewal reports due by the first, putting it off till after the first would be really nice for me.
Of the year, no.
First, after.
December first.
This isn't that other one you've just been doing though, was not do the first two? That, that S F R.
Yeah.
Yeah, I remember that last year. Yeah, and, um, with a lot of being new and having a lot of training, I'm not able to push as much off on the lawn as I was in with Alex. So it's, it's really crunching me. Yeah.
And I told Michelle I want to make sure that they have time, she, Maureen, et cetera, have time to pull information together so that we can have a productive meeting versus too many questions.
And I think what Maureen and I are gonna do, we're gonna meet after hours to get things done, so we're not interrupted and, right?
So if we want to schedule one now, or we can wait maybe until our, our first December meeting?
On the second.
See once where you're at, you know, what, what your schedule is with Maureen, and so we don't have to reschedule again.
Sure, I think that's a good idea.
Okay. So if you're okay with that.
And then the second agenda.
Yeah.
And you guys figure out what's gonna work for the both of you. And maybe throw out a couple of dates. Because December is gonna be busy for some of us, too.
True.
And I haven't promised that, uh, Williams and company getting back to me, they're still responding. Yeah, they were supposed to give.
They haven't started.
They haven't, they don't service anything or nothing?
Really?
So then this last email I sent today, I copied, um, another person in the office on it, hoping that maybe I'll get a response that way.
Okay.
Aye, aye, aye.
Okay.
Is there an opt clause in the contract?
I don't know, it'd be pretty hard right now. Yeah, because you gotta finish this year, get it done. And we said.
Right. Well, we gotta have some leverage if they're gonna stolen walls like this, you know?
Even Aiden doesn't get back to you? Aiden, the one that, oh, Liam, or Liam, right? You know, Liam said he was gonna get a different position in the company, in the company, but that is who I copied, because Liam was always good, he said that, he always got back to you.
Well, maybe he'll get something done.
Maybe, right?
Good.
Maybe, hopefully, yes, tell him that we need to move.
Yeah.
Well, I think they know that.
Exactly. Okay, thanks for staying on top of them about that. Okay, so wait to hear that, we'll have, talk about that at the center meeting, um, agenda item number eleven, part-time police officer. Entertaining a motion to approve a resolution to hire a part-time police officer as noted in your packet.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution. On police officer, you want me to read it?
Yep, please.
Resolution to hire candidate Kane Junkman for a part-time police officer, be it resolved by the Council of the City of Plena, Iowa, to approve the hiring of Kane Junkman, Junkman. For a part-time police officer, starting at thirty dollars per hour, plus IFRS for the city of Plena, Iowa.
Good motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Discussion, Nate, do you want to talk about this person and, and your, what your plan would be?
What I gather, he basically makes his full-time living working several part-time work. I know he's recently started, he's pulled the features of the Sullivan, before that, he's also, I think he said a radio.
Sure.
Do so, so.
So the expectation, like how part-time would this be potentially, you know, like eight, ten hours a week or something like that?
Yes, sorry, yeah, I see how. How fast his schedule looks up and so on and so forth, at least at the beginning. Push out further dates, it'll probably.
So he's from the area then, Nate, or?
Uh, yeah. Lives in a room. Six and a half years.
So he's been vetted then, early, well, what about the academy? Has he been to the academy yet or?
Yeah, I, yeah, he's, he's good to go on that, we just.
So he's a certified law enforcement officer?
With any hire, there's paperwork that needs to be, which is what they call a report of hire, the academy keeps track of who's working where and so on.
So what'd the committee think? Did you visit with this guy, or?
Hmm, we kind of lucked it up today.
He loved Nate, can see.
Had the weed?
Yeah.
Got the calls, or had, got the calls from the guy in Sullivan, and then he called them.
So I assume his pay is commensurate with the other. Couple of counts or whatever he's working on.
Okay, yeah. Okay, any other questions? Somebody ready to vote? Michelle, roll call please.
Carolyn.
Aye.
Nicole Jacob.
Hi.
Jeanne Ralph.
Hi.
Danny Workmeister.
Aye.
Steve Herring.
Aye.
All right. Great, a step. Okay.
But we're still in the process of looking for full-time, right?
Yes.
Okay, good.
I think the hiring says full-time and part-time, right?
All right, item number twelve, uh, fiscal year twenty-six budget, Michelle just went to budget work, trainage, and tell us about that and kind of preface for.
It's, it was actually first I've done to. It was badly, the second half of the budget, they, the workshop, they split us up, you know, you could go to the very, the, like, new clerks, or you could go more advanced, and I went to the new clerks. There was a lot of information, um, Ted Nelson said he was cramming six hours of information in an hour and a half.
Yeah.
Wow. So it was a lot, but there was things I, I did take from it, um, I think this, this whole relevant budget I'll be more comfortable with. And I won't be so scared to reach out to him because he's really nice, and they're, they're there to help us, you know, we.
They're not there to put you down.
No. Yeah, so. Um, I did learn that, that the emergency fund that we have, that, that is no longer, we can't levy for that anymore, so that fund we need to, um, get rid of. So that's more, um, more dollars we can use for funding some of these other projects, so there's, I think, close to thirty thousand in that. So that's what we need to get rid of, um, he talked about the A ten max levy max, which we are just a little bit over. We have to be below that. Within four years, I think, or more years.
Or three, I think.
So we're not, we're not too far above it, which is really good.
Where are we at?
I'd have to look at last year's, but not, we're not a lot, we're not a long ways above that, it's not.
That means eight point one, right?
Right.
Eight dollars and ten cents, yeah. Going to go through and just familiarize everybody with the upcoming schedule, here you've got a copy of, of budget calendar. It says example, but it's really all the dates that need to be accomplished.
Yeah. I guess the first week of December is probably more important, that's when the budget forms are released by Department of Management. And then by January first, um, that's when they send all the taxable evaluations, or their enter. And also that's when we need to gather budget requests from all of the different departments. See, then we need to put together primary budget and whole budget workshops with city council, um, another thing that he recommended was open them to the public. And get public input on what they feel about budgets and what should be budgeted.
So in doing that, our, our budget workshops, meetings are all open, but run them as kind of a more of a public hearing concept?
Yeah, he said try to get, try to get your residents in there.
To give some thoughts on what they feel the city needs.
Right. And then set April second hearing date for property tax levy hearing. And then no later than four P M. On March fifth, we create a proposed tax rate levy and set a public hearing date for the proposed property tax levy, and then we enter these into the Department of Management software, so they can be transferred to the county office of county auditors. For required mailing, that date's changed, last year it was March fifteenth, they pushed it to March fifth. That way the, the county auditors can get their mailings out by the fifteenth, by the fifteenth. Mailing of truth and taxation statements sent out by the auditor on March fifteenth. And then we must be published between thirteenth, the thirteenth and the twenty-third of a public hearing, not less than ten, not more than twenty days prior to the date of proposal levy rate public hearings. And then we need to hold our property tax levy hearing. If you remember from last year, they said that's the only item you can have on the agenda, you can have, you can have a meeting afterwards.
Right.
But he said ten minutes, you don't get ten minutes.
Did we do it that way, too?
We did, yes. We did a little bit more time in between because about the time they were saying it should be a half hour or an hour, because it was the first year and they didn't know what was required, but they've shortened that up.
Um, let's see, set April twentieth a public hearing date for the full budget adoption. And we met all our, all our deadlines last year. Publish notice of public hearing for the full budget adoption, that needs to be between April third and thirteen. And then we need to hold another special meeting or move April sixteenth meeting to April twenty-third, public hearings on a budget adoption and adopt, and adopt the budget. Seems confusing. And then no later than April thirtieth, we need to submit online into the county auditor. I didn't think last year went terrible, I just. I just, was really unsure of myself and what I was doing, and, but I don't think it went awful.
I don't either.
I don't either.
Were you working with it basically the first, in everything? The biggest issue.
Finding out things that you didn't have, you know, hadn't done, and that was late, and. The biggest issue I had was that the previous budget was never entered into our software.
Right.
That was the biggest issue I had. And trying to figure out where things were put, and that was.
That made sense to you.
Yeah.
So you could find it back.
Right.
So I presume you will, like, the fourth item on here to gather budget requests from departments and stakeholders by January one, I presume?
You know, I'd almost like I would almost like to have that a little earlier, just, just some ideas, I'm not talking about anything set in stone.
Yeah.
Just some ideas.
He might want also, you know, give those departments and stakeholders that give you a budget, you know, fire, ambulance, police, all those things where you know, give them as much notice as possible, so we can let them know, and they can get that on their calendar.
Library.
Library, yep.
And the other thing that was said at that budget workshop is, you know, the council's really, really vital and important when it comes to the expenditures of the budget. And your input is extremely important. We need to start looking at, I know Marley's talked about future projects, but we need to really start looking at one-year, two-year, three-year, five-year goals, and start managing our budget, looking at those goals. And that will be very beneficial as we move forward. I know we have that list, but we haven't really, we, we, we really don't have a five-year plan.
Maybe we can work on some of those ideas out at that workshop that we do. Especially if you and Marine are both with some thoughts.
Help us. And, and Maria said she would, she would like to be here for it, so.
Oh, good.
We need, I'll talk to her and see what.
Let's coordinate with her, too.
This is.
What they will probably have to do, we probably have to end, well, we'll need to define what that workshop is gonna be, because it's like, we won't have time for everything that night. We set it up as kind of a finance, what bonding, planning, et cetera, and I know prior to that, you know, we need to know what kind of projects need to be funded as well, so we need to take a little look at that, and then of course, budget revisions.
And looking, looking at everything, I, I really don't think that we'll need to bond for the switchgear. For the what? For the switchgear. I think we're okay. Although more once we, once we're ready tonight.
Right.
I'd like to have a second opinion, too. I think we're okay. It's gonna take some time to rebuild the electric department.
Right.
But.
Key things we need to know as soon as possible, if there's any next projects on the horizon, or just over the horizon.
Really bad, have to get done.
Right.
Kelly's got any thoughts, hopefully nothing.
Geez, it's just.
Yeah. It's rolling. Well, now's the time to do it, get it in.
So do we need the preliminary budgets from our different departments by January one, then?
Before you.
I actually, I, at least an idea, a little ahead of.
Maybe a middle of December, yeah, or just there. Cause then we can take them home and look at them, too.
Previous years, we always had to have them in December.
Did you? I was thinking it was a junior.
Before the second meeting.
Oh.
Before.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Okay.
If you can get the specific date out there to everybody, so everybody knows what they need to do.
You have some meeting to go.
Right. He's, well, you already, you always give us a couple with a couple of years.
Yeah, keep it.
You always go a couple of years ahead. And that's what's good.
My time to party.
So do we need to let, like, the ambulance know, and?
Yes. And the airport know, and? You know, and I think, is Amber gonna be more doing that this year than the way it sounded? I would assume. But maybe tell her, too, if she wants to start doing a little bit on to another next couple of years, just like they do.
You want us to contact them?
If you'd like.
I will do that for you.
Yeah, if you would do that, and then just confirm with Michelle that you have, so it doesn't get missed.
Well, I can call the library, because I think I'm on that board.
Yeah, and I, Matt had said he's already been working on it.
Has a good, good, then that won't take much.
One thing, if you could do, Michelle, in the next, you know, couple of weeks, maybe, or right after December first, is take this budget calendar, this one's set up for a town that has two meetings a month on the first and third Tuesday.
Yeah.
If you could change these dates to be first and third Monday, cause every once in a while, cause April second is a Wednesday in, in twenty twenty-five, so does that mean we will go the following week, or probably not on March thirty-first, but if you could update that, that'd be great. So those are key dates, and then item C, assigned budget sections, and those responsible, so you will contact those people, okay? All right. Anything else on that topic?
Unless anybody has any questions.
All right, we'll move on to item number thirteen, reports, to give you a chance. Uh, Kelly, anything you've got? To updates?
We got, uh, everything else, the, they came up today and finished the electric on it, and kind of got a crash course on that, out there. It's pretty much popping up still. Talking, going back and forth with Beck and King about the sell, not get a hundred percent sludge.
How much is left in it? Do you have any idea?
Maybe. I think they took one point two hours probably. You know, I'd say six hundred thousand gallons or something, or seven hundred thousand.
Quite a bit, though.
So there's a lot of resistance from them to come back, then, I'm assuming?
Yeah.
That's why I just let it back work with it, you said there was no amount in the contract, so.
They just said remove the sludge, or that had to be removed, or X price. That's pretty clear.
I think.
We need to get legal on, though, to try to push this, because we're getting to the.
I think Beck's been an engineer a long time. I think they'll hopefully do their thing.
Just where they can earn their fees.
I, I have not, I have not sent a check for that change.
Just hang on to that.
Mm-hmm.
That might be something we have to do, too, if they're not, if they're gonna, you know, not come back and not like just hold some money back from their payment.
Percentage?
Ten each, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
And there usually is a clause somewhere down there, too, which you can hold back in the contract.
Let's see, what else is coming up? Christmas decorations, what, what's the timing of those going up?
I usually do that with the Monday after Thanksgiving. And one holiday kind of day.
I got a question for you. I would like to look for a little bitty, a real evergreen in that pot that's right down there by the house from sign. If we would put lights on it, is there a place we can plug in there? I didn't know if that's ever been lit there.
Chamber usually does.
Do you? I know you do all the Bolo Mart, I didn't know if you did anything in that pot.
Yep. Brenda had a tree that she put in there, I think the last couple of years, there was always something on there.
For sure. But I didn't remember if you guys, or it was just her.
Yeah, that's usually, yeah, Chamber usually does all of that, and we'll do that after Thanksgiving. Or if we do it before Thanksgiving, the lights won't be turned on until Thanksgiving, that's usually how that goes.
Sure.
Yep.
Yeah, Kelly, were you gonna address this revolving loan fund tonight, or?
Yeah, I.
You gotta, oh, Michelle, sorry.
Well, no, um, Kelly, it's me, and I put it in the packet, print one to look at. And I thought we would probably discuss it maybe at the next council meeting.
Okay. Do we even qualify, though, or do you think with the?
I think we tried to do it last year and didn't get anything.
Okay.
And you just, Dennis E-mail'd me and asked me if we wanted to try for again. Who'd be for.
I guess a little hard.
Just as well, right?
Yeah.
Do we have a, last year's to?
I think so. Yeah, Dennis helped me through it last year.
Dennis.
Yeah, and then.
With the try, they take a few times, sometimes get in front of them.
A lot of the money went to bigger cities.
Got flooded out and so on. Okay, thanks.
Let's see, did you find out, Kelly, from Beck excavating rock cleanup, how they kind of finish up their stuff? So that if we can get any ideas of how we more efficiently finish up ours?
He, he told me most towns clean it up themselves, so.
Did he have any tips on a more efficient way of doing it than what we're doing, or does it just seem, okay? Hopeful, wishful thinking.
Are there other towns around us that do this? Which ones?
I think most towns do it.
Oh, really?
I, I learned when, when I was doing the street finance report, it is considered maintenance. It's not considered any type of replace construction, it is considered maintenance.
All right. Michelle, anything else? Okay. Let's see, a little bit of additional interest in our medical clinic building. Just got some contact information secondhand from the pain clinic down at the Dunes. They had been seeing a hundred and forty-five patients per month at Pringar, and related to the hospital, that now those people, there are some people from Palena One in particular, that brought this information back that, that went down there, and they were very interested in, you know, talking to us about the clinic, either renting it or buying it. So I, you know, that, that just, I just got that information from our resident town here today, I put a call into them, left a message. So that would be great, you know, if we could have that service, you know, in town and use of the building. The other one that I mentioned last time, that, that party is, is interested, but the timing, they said, isn't good right now. I think what they're trying to sense is how long they could maybe wait, because it would be better for them with where they're at in their business model, if it were next year versus this year. So we'll see there, but so it's good to, you know, it'd be awesome to have that service available for local people.
Mm-hmm.
Have we come up with a purchase price on that building?
No. We haven't.
Okay.
So, so we'll.
Consider that, since we got people interested.
Exactly, so we can contact it, you know, we can contact some commercial realtors and start getting a feel for that. We did hear, Kelly and I were in here one day, and we heard from former clinic people that there has a roof leak. I don't know if you have that chance to go look at that yet, but, you know, it sounds like it had been for a long time, but they had never mentioned it to the city, that there was a problem. They told us which, which room, which exam room to go check out, and.
But they were responsible for all of the maintenance, so correct?
Probably not roof structure.
Okay.
So.
How's the parts, progress with the Palena economy, as far as properties we wanna transfer, that anywhere?
We need to, the, the next step, it sounds like, needs to be, we need to meet with them again and talk through solutions. Tisha is aware, cause she is, she's one that, you know, had to help, help us cancel the meeting, she's on that group as well, I asked her to meet, cause since she's on that group, you know, talk through the problems, and see once if they have ideas, give them, you know, it's been a couple of weeks, haven't heard back, so I'll follow up with her and make sure that that meeting gets set up.
I think we need to, you know, push that along. Yeah, so.
Yep.
Especially if we, I suppose we could include the clinic, couldn't we? What we're doing?
Yeah, we can do whatever, you know, the council authorized us to do, that one was just the residential.
Yeah.
Not downtown properties, but yeah, we could definitely do it that way if we wanted to.
I guess, like, sometime longer, though, so.
If we think about some, yeah.
Exactly.
I think we talked about it, though, didn't we? In that meeting down there at the bank? We kinda talked a little bit about that.
I don't remember that, that being a part of this, I mean, I remember, I remember the property being a part of, I don't remember, you know, ever talking about any specifics.
Right. Good.
Okay, city council comments? Anything else on?
Oh, yes, um, the elementary, they have reached out to me, the, uh, in Pringar. They are looking for people to come and do High Five Fridays. So, um, yeah, yeah, they reached out to both, or they reached out to me for both Chamber and the city. I don't know if it's something that the city would counsel employees, anybody that would be wanting to do that. It's just a ten-minute thing, eight o'clock, or like eight oh five, or something like that.
Will start soon.
Yeah, yeah, about ten minutes to do, but they're just looking for new people, new groups to do it.
Do they have scheduled Fridays that are open and available, they're trying to fill?
Yes, but she's always reaching out to other people to kind of get that, so, um, Chamber's doing this Friday, on your calendar, if you remember, um. And I can reach out to her, if it's something that the council's even interested in doing.
What do you think, Michelle? I think it'd be awesome.
I think it'd be good, too.
It's part of our extended community with the school district.
It is.
Part of us, we're about city employees.
Yeah, anybody who, who wants to do it, the more the merrier, it's fun to have a lot of people there, we've done it with three people before.
At the, at the Palena.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well.
City council and staff.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
That we'd be interested in doing it.
Pringar, I've seen the banks doing it.
Yeah.
Some of them are doing it.
Don't you think we need to keep our office open, though, somehow?
What time does the office open here?
Seven thirty.
Seven thirty.
All come in.
Okay.
Come and be serious.
Goodbye.
Remember that, Ryan will come and ask his phone. Yeah, whoever, you know, I can get. There you go.
There you go.
I can reach out to Renee and see what she has available now, um, and then.
Yeah, some dates.
Yeah, I think it's only fun.
Yeah.
Okay. Then, Michelle, can I just let you know, and then we can?
Yeah. Send out an email, or whatever you do. Nope, I think it's a good idea.
Okay. Good idea.
What did you call it again?
High five Friday.
High five Friday.
Five Fridays. They do a good job of publicizing, then, you know.
Yep.
After, you know, following up on it. Anything else from any city council member? Any committee reports? Department reports, please, Nate, anything?
So he said he's still interested, so given time to try to work on the physical end, and then I think they're discussing. Very least, we need to get a different post test in.
Yeah, it, it's already on its way. It should be, actually should be here maybe tomorrow, I got the UPS notification.
Okay.
And this is for full-time?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Ryan, fire?
In December, I think I have a meeting with all my council people to get them up to date, where we're standing on things. I'd really like to have a good conversation during this financial deal. I know communication is a two-way street. But I'm concerned on the direction of the fire department. Last year, I proposed kind of our truck issue of where we're getting backed up on replacing vehicles and stuff. I, we, we, we have to be serious, but it's, because it's two to three years to get a truck. And they're not getting cheaper. And I mean, even just ordering a chassis to re-chassis one of our trucks. It could be eighteen months, two years, I mean, look how long it took to get the city back up. We really need to concentrate on some of these issues, and then funding. We really need to concentrate on some of these issues and then funding for the building. I mean, part of the conversation with the um, townships is maybe their portion of funding since we can that justifies as part their money can be put towards the building. That's justified, so. Yeah. Kind of like to get a game plan sooner than later because during our first open house, everybody kept asking, whenever we get started, whenever we get started, whenever we start. Again, we're trying to back up in that corner. Um, we we do have a a proposed price that was announced at that meeting, so the price is out there. So, yeah. But I think it's something we really need to take serious steps to figure out what's going on. Um, my last thing is I really would like to try to do something with the fire department funds and the general budget. So it's separated off better. You know, like the electric has a fund and tour has a fund, it'd be really nice to get that money instead of just never, never land and general fund. And because I mean, my budget, I'm using as a living document. You know, I presented five years last year and now updating, which I pretty well have done. And I'll be presenting twenty-nine and thirty along with budget I turn in. But it's, it's kind of hard to understand what's going on with our money when it's just in a general fund and that and its own separate account. And I mean, this has been talked about clear back when Gideon Carroll, you know, my many people. So I mean, it's, it's not a new conversation. It's something that I feel needs to be done.
Have you checked to see if they can be pulled out of the general fund?
Well, I'm not saying that pulled out of the general. But just like the sewer and electric, they're part of the general.
They're not.
They're not part of the general.
They're their own utilities. By state, by state, yeah.
We, we have to do something different because I have a whole and I mean, it's just not my opinion past fire chiefs have shared the same opinion. Questions on what's happening to our funding. It's not a new question.
From the townships is what you're saying, funding from the townships.
Where that money is.
Where's that money?
But the township monies should be used first. And then the city money is used after township money is suspended. Township money is for fire protection, so anything that the fire department spends. This is why I was told this is the week. That the township funds are spent first and then the city portion goes next. So what was left was city money that went back in the general.
Which, which I have a hard time agreeing with because no matter what, the city has to have a fire department. Because if we lose all our townships, the city still has to fund that fire department. So this is, this is a joint adventure. Now, the townships are paying us for service. They're not paying their support our fire department a hundred percent. Yeah. Michelle's been very helpful getting me numbers over the past ten years and yeah, that's, you know, and unfortunately, Michelle's caught in the middle of an issue that's been many years, not just.
Right.
So, and I mean, like I said, that's just my opinion. I mean, they're paying us for a service, so this city should have skin in the game the whole time, not just.
Which would be a good discussion, you know, because, you know, unless the city would spend zero on fire department budget, they've got some skin in the game, it's just a matter of how much, you know, it's.
I have on paper where years past that the townships actually paid us more than we were even allowed the budget.
But those funds were used first or?
Well, that, that's where, that's where I really want to have some clarification of you know.
It's hard to give direction if we don't know for sure what the procedure actually is, if township goes first or if city money goes first and then townships go second, we're gonna need some clarity on that first.
I think what we need is we have to decide do we want to put this on an upcoming city agenda item discussion meeting first or on a workshop?
Because like I said, the city is already taxing for fire. And the city is required to have a fire. So the townships are contracting us to provide them. So no matter what, the city should be putting money into it. Because there's a tax about that the city receives. And it's the same taxation that the townships.
Well, the city does cover your budget that you present.
Would probably get sun though.
Only part of it, because the, all of it.
Yeah, right.
So I thought that was city.
Well, there's both township and city.
I thought we did it all, the city.
No, we don't, okay.
I did.
Okay, agenda item coming up, you'll have to help us, you know, from your conversations with Ryan if we should.
Yeah, and I'm not even sure who to reach out to because I've reached out to other cities and they all do it differently, but it all goes, it it all stays in the general. Some will take like the truck fund. Um, if there's, if there's money left, then it will stay with that truck, that that truck fund. Um, if there's a way to split that out somehow.
No, I mean, that that was all part of our problem with some of these truck issues is.
Right.
You know.
Because Ryan does put in his budget extra money for the, for the trucks.
For his five-year, ten-year.
Yeah, but then that all just goes back into general. So he, we need to figure out what Ryan has put in there for the past however many years, and that should probably go into that truck fund.
Well, we have to look to see once, do we really have the ability to go retroactive or do we set a policy going forward?
Yes.
But that's, you know, so, so let's, let's get an agenda item on a meeting, either a meeting or a workshop, so that we can address that.
The workshop.
I mean, I'm not, I'm not trying to start. I'm not trying to just sit there and throw gas. That's not. But like I said many a times, and I think people are sick of me saying that we're excellent at being reactive. But we got that down. No, no more training is needed, we need to be.
So would you like to, you would like to come to that meeting that we have? Back to the first of December.
I don't think we have time for in this upcoming media for all of the things that we're going to try to cover in that meeting, so I think we have to break it out. We've got, because we've got, really got we've got some more work done, projects to sign those out. We've got to look at but um, fund financing and bonding needs. We've got fire department, those could very well be each three separate.
Which might be, we should. So otherwise, we might as well order, beat some of the finances.
Yep.
On this fire department issue, I think uh, there has to be some sort of so-called formula that is given to the fire department beginning of the year so that they know what numbers to budget. So there's got to be some sort of way that we can this is amount of dollars that the city has allotted to the fire department to join with the townships and so on to pay bills or whatever it is and what's ever left at the end of the year. You know, from my budget experience with that department.
Right, it doesn't just go into the general fund.
Right.
But it does. I mean, that's, that's how the general fund does work. The ambulance is the same, libraries the same. Every, every department that's in that general fund. Nate, this goes back in the general fund.
So what do, what do you do if you deplete that general fund?
All is a city.
Okay, good, all those good details for having an agenda.
And if you weren't, if you weren't in the general fund, we couldn't levy for you.
Oh.
Whoa.
Is there some way to make a sub account though within the general?
Still, I don't know.
So that would be a good question, see if we can do that because.
Counting.
That's what I meant, yeah, right.
There's nothing in Jukebox that has anything separating. I don't know who you would call, but.
Maybe Maureen would.
How about, um, she would say it all go back in the general.
Yes.
Right, but with into a certain sub-account within the general, can we do that? That's what I'm asking.
Maureen knows how they work.
Okay. Yep.
Yeah.
So since we're, you know, since this isn't really, bring, bring it up to get it on the agenda is good. Um, let's get it on an agenda and get as much information ahead of time.
An agenda or it'll be a workshop, talking about this?
It'll be on an agenda, not a council, I mean, a workshop can have an agenda too, so.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
All righty.
I was gonna say, we're not on a regular meeting.
We can, we can have it outside of a meeting.
Okay.
And figure out it's going to be its own workshop or combined with any of the others, so.
Yeah, I mean, even like my equipment that I'm purchasing to make like are smaller. I, I even break that down so you guys know this is what we're buying this year.
What you need.
Yeah.
If we're going to be doing it for the fire department, we're going to have to do it for everybody, then we're going to have to have a.
I'm not sure if others are this worried.
No, but it's, it's only fair. If you're doing it for you, we're going to have to do it for everybody, so it's going to have to have, you're, we're going to have to know what, what we're going to be planning.
And like I said, we're already, we're already above max levy, so we can't levy for anymore. The general fund, so it is what it is.
My, part of my concern with the fire department thing is the dollars that come from the townships are dedicated to.
Those have to be spent on.
Right, well, the city, city should have, just like a township should have amount that they need for.
I think so too.
Yeah.
And I don't know if I've ever seen that though.
We, we haven't done that because we're not required, and my understanding is we're not required to do that, so we would have to decide as a council, is that the policy that we're going to put in place?
Okay.
That hasn't been.
Yep.
Can you send out a note to other towns? How do, how do other communities, I mean, they all got fire departments. Sheldon, Sandborne, whatever. There's got to be somebody that's got, has done something like this.
I've talked to several and.
What do they do?
Everybody's.
Different. Well, let's find a good one then.
Yeah, yeah.
That's for you, Earl.
Where are you gonna go?
I know, but I'd like to see.
It's got to be effective and affordable.
Yeah.
So we got something to go by.
I'll, I'll try to get one.
If you could, yeah, if you could sound down from a few of the communities and throw that at us so we can look at it.
Okay, let's move on to our department reports. Any, nobody here from ambulance, have, anybody have anything from ambulance? Library? Or airport? All right. That brings us to agenda item number fourteen.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say aye. Gary.
I think we just save that one for you, Steve. So we know you're here.
I think if you can get some of those figures right, then great.
Yes. Yes, very.